Order the Tuesday, June 7th, 2016, meeting of the Iredal County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd ask you to bow your heads in silent prayer and reflection, especially for the family of Captain Bradley Long, who was a volunteer fire department member of the Cheryl's Ford Terrill Fire and Rescue Department, who gave his life in the service of his fellow citizens and community just yesterday. So, if you'll just join me in bowing your heads. You please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then I would ask Scout Samuel Donnelly of Troop 607 to please come and lead us in the pledge to the flag. You can come right up.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Samuel. At this time, we have an enjoyable event, to be able to recognize one of our public servants who has worked with the county, mostly in the Sheriff's Department, initially, I believe, in Communications, who is retiring. And so, we will be recognizing retirement of Lieutenant James Allen Sykes. And I would ask Sheriff Darren Campbell if he and Lieutenant Sykes could join me at the table. And Sheriff Campbell, if you will please regale us of the contributions that Lieutenant Sykes has made for these nearly thirty years.
Rita said I had to be sure to use this. First of all, I want to just add on the sentiments of Chairman for the lost your family. Us here, I want to say it for Bradley Long, what we dealt with yesterday, sort of fitting with Allen and where he started at is, we call you friends, we call you brothers, but we're all family, and we're truly sorry. And it's sort of fitting with Allen because he started on the Lake Patrol, which I think the Chairman will surely hear tell you. But with Allen, far as being with the Sheriff's Office, when I first come to Sheriff's Office in ninety-three, he had already been there. He was a senior officer, and I told him I wasn't going to give him a hard time. But to come in and knowing, as a rookie officer, see somebody like this, I was very much, I've learned so much. And I'm not just standing here saying that as a friend or as law enforcement, but now as the sheriff, I can honestly say your contributions through the children you've dealt with, the seniors that you do now in the academy, and hopefully continue on, it's very much appreciated. To make thirty years and the things that you'll have to remember, but also the memories that you'll cherish. So, I just want to say thank you from me personally. And now, Sheriff, it's been a pleasure. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Campbell. On behalf of Iredal County, we're going to present you a plaque in appreciation for your thirty years of dedicated service to Iredal County. But your name's on here, but who's missing is your family. You know, to be a public servant, and particularly to be in law enforcement and to deal with the uncertainties of every day, going out and doing the job and not knowing exactly what's going to transpire in dangerous situations. It takes special wife and a special children to be able to deal with that, to process that, and to provide you the support you need to be able to go out and do your job. So, they're not here this evening because your wife's working as a nurse at Iredal Memorial Hospital, and your two children are working on their EOGs, getting ready to pass with flying colors. But you know, the strength of our community is in our volunteers and our public servants, and the strength of our volunteers and public servants is in their families. So, on behalf of Iredal County, all the county commissioners here today, and indeed, all of the rest of Iredal County's staff, we want to recognize you for your service. And now, pass the mic to you.
Thank you. Yes, it has been thirty years when I started, sound like a long time, but I tell you, it goes very quick. And I've heard many people say that over the years, and you really don't think of it until it's finally hit you. So, yes, thirty years has gone quickly. Did start with Communications, 911. Larry Dickerson was my supervisor back then, which came from the Sheriff's Office many years ago. And so, he was supportive whenever I said I wanted, or I told him my main goal was to eventually go into law enforcement. And of course, back then, Billy T., you had to bring your own equipment. So, borrowed much from him, even drove my own personal car to get through the driving course back then, when Mitchell College didn't have their own vehicles, as they do now. So, it's come a far cry in law enforcement in the last twenty-five to thirty years. But thank you. The faces have all changed since I began, but they're just as friendly and very supportive as they were then. So, and this is my third sheriff I've worked for, and I can't remember the exact words that I used the other day, but I was lucky that Clyde Lloyd hired me, Phil Redman kept me, and Darren Campbell has tolerated me for the last few months to hang on to me so I could make this mark. But thank you again.
Mr. Smith, would you please run over the adjustments to the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under presentation of special recognitions and awards, we have a memorial resolution that'll be presented for Bradley Long. Under Administrative Matters, Item E., a request from EMS for approval to release capital equipment funds for Iredal County Rescue Squad. Under announcement of vacancies occurring on board and commissions, we have an announcement for the State's Board of Adjustment, ETJ. And under appointments to boards and commissions, one appointment for the Personnel Advisory Board.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the adjustments to the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. As noted in the adjustment, we'll move on to Item B., which is a memorial resolution for Mr. Bradley Long. Whereas, the members of Cheryl's Ford Terrill Fire and Rescue provide invaluable services to the citizens of Iredal County, we call on you today to remember Captain Bradley Long, who gave the ultimate sacrifice in service to the Lake Norman community. And whereas, we pray for and express our most sincere sympathy to his family, friends, and his fellow firefighters. And whereas, we are continually mindful that the greatest love anyone can show is to give their life for others. And whereas, it may be understood that the incident which caused his death happened when he was serving our community, be it therefore resolved that Captain Bradley Long be remembered here today, and the record of his service and achievements be made public in this place. And be it further and therefore resolved that our thoughts and best wishes be extended to Cheryl Ford Terrill Fire and Rescue, City of Newton Fire Department, Catawba County, and most importantly, his family. Be it finally resolved, a copy of this resolution is placed in the minutes of the Iredal County Commissioners, and a copy provided to the Cheryl's Ford Terrill Fire and Rescue Catawba County Emergency Services, Catawba County Board of Commissioners, and Captain Long's family, adopted this seventh day of June, 2016. This is a recognition of the fact that, you know, Iredal County does not exist in a vacuum, that we provide services to our neighbors, and our neighbors provide services to us as we respond to emergencies that run the gamut. And in this instance, the Lake community has multi-jurisdictional participation in providing law enforcement, fire, and rescue services that really know no boundaries. And in this instance, a young man was missing and presumed drowned, and a recovery operation was underway in which three divers ran into distress, and one paid the ultimate price, and two were injured in the process. And so, we recognize that this is a dangerous job, and it's a job that is done in many instances by volunteers, not just paid professionals, but professional volunteers. And our hearts and prayers go out to the Long family. Is there a motion?
All for a motion that we adopt this resolution, Mr. Chairman, and you sign it, and it be sent to his fellow firefighters and family.
Motion is made by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. We have no appointments before the board today, and at this time, we'll move on to public hearings. And Mr. Smith, if you could outline the first public hearing.
Matthew, would you come on up? This is, the first request is a public hearing to consider a request for Mack Molding Company to rezone 3.3 acres at 135 Water Tank Road.
Okay.
Good evening to the board.
Mr. Todd, how are you?
Been good. The first request, as stated, it's 3.3 acres. It's highlighted in blue. The front half is currently zoned highway business. The rear of the property is currently zoned residential agricultural. It's adjacent to the existing Mack Molding facility. Staff is recommending approval. It fits the 2030 Horizon Plan. The lot's adjacent to industrial zone property, and traffic impact should not exceed capacity. Planning Board also voted to approve this recommendation eight to zero. That's the 2030 Horizon Plan showing the employment center, industrial flex office area for the parcel. It's the current site, or currently, there's the old Zodiac building on the property. It's highlighted. Just a different aerial image of the property, looking from the front. A picture from the front of the establishment, you can see Mack Molding on the right. Looking back toward Old Mountain Road, you can see some of the adjoining commercial uses. And then, looking back toward the end where a Mack Molding is. And I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board.
Are there any questions for Mr. Todd? Any comments? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to recommend in favor of the zoning map amendment, and to make a finding-
I think I should have the public hearing.
Yeah.
So, let me go ahead. I'll go ahead before the motion and open this matter for public hearing. Is there anyone? I don't have anyone signed up to be heard. Does anyone in the audience that failed to sign up want to be heard on this matter? Hearing none, close the public hearing, and then ask for the motion.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to recommend in favor of the zoning map amendment, and to make a finding that the approval is consistent with the adopted 2030 Horizon Plan, and that said approval is reasonable and in the public interest, and furthers the goals of the 2030 Horizon Plan, because it is in harmony with the area and is adjacent to industrial zone property, and traffic impact should not exceed road capacity.
Any further comment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner Robertson. We will now move on to Item B. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item is a statutorily required step in our budget approval process. The public hearing tonight will be to consider a proposed budget of $190,382,760. Budget will keep the tax rate as is at 52.75 cents per $100 valuation. It's based on valuation of $21,982,514,053, and a tax collection rate of 98.58 percent. I don't have a whole lot to talk about with the budget that I haven't already said before. If you do choose to adopt the budget tonight, we have an ordinance that is Item F. under Administrative Matters, that you can consider at that point. The only change to the budget that has been sent out to you is that the proposed tax rate for Mount Warren Volunteer Fire District will go from five and a half to six cents. And I'd be glad to answer any questions prior to any public comment.
Any comments or questions of Mr. Smith at this point? Then, open the public hearing for the consideration of the Iredal County proposed budget for fiscal years 2016 and 2017. I don't have anyone that has signed up. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to be heard? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close this public hearing and ask if there is any further discussion or comment. And hearing none, is there a motion to adopt the FY 2016 budget ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to offer that motion, that we adopt this budget with the change that was made in our pre-agenda briefing, as mentioned by our county manager, Ms. Smith, where the tax rate for Mount Warren would go to six cents, with the provision that an agreement we've worked out with them as far as personnel and services with the City of Mooreville. I think this incorporates into the concern, this motion incorporates into it the concern for how fire service will be delivered in the future, and the pending funding structure for the delivery of those services, but at the same time addresses the increasing demands on the fire service in Mount Warren. As far as the budget, in general, I think it is a very good budget, given the continued slow growth of revenues. I think our staff has done a good job of managing throughout the year, and I think our county manager and our finance director, Ms. Susan Robertson, have done a good job in presenting a balanced budget that takes in considerations about everything you can think of as far as a budget, and they've made a solid recommendation to begin with, with only slight changes coming from this board. I'll offer that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion?
I would just like to, if I could, make the observation, and that is, and that is, sometimes if there's not a lot of discussion or debate over the budget, it can mean either that you have an apathetic board, or that the county manager and the leadership team adopted the priorities of the board as their own, and that the budget accurately reflected those priorities, and also a good heaping dose of common sense, which I think it did, and the fact that this was an extremely smooth budget process, and also by virtue of the fact that there's not a bunch of people here coming, having issues or at odds with the budget process, I think speaks volumes to how well the budget, how well the budget process was to be created, presented, and then finally to be adopted. So, my congratulations to Ron Smith and your team. Thank you very much.
Can I mention one more thing? Could I share with you my favorite Thomas Sowell quote? Politicians are a breed of people who quietly take your money and then flamboyantly give a portion of it back to you. But this board is not flamboyant in the spending of your money, and I congratulate them on that characteristic. I just thought that was amusing, and you might enjoy it.
We all need to be brought down to Mount Olympus. Any further comments? Prior to voting, I would just like to extend my thanks to county manager Ron Smith, and all of the department heads that put in many, many hours of stubby pencil work in terms of working through, as Commissioner Robertson has mentioned, you know, what this board's philosophy and priorities are, and implementing those in a way that delivers services, but does so in a cost-effective and efficient manner. And I also want to thank those agencies outside of the purview of Iredal County, who also submitted their budgets, and also were in line with that political philosophy and belief of being good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. So, at this point in time, a motion has been made by Commissioner Johnson to adopt the budget ordinance for FY 2016, 2017, with those changes that we have made concerning the Mount Warren fire tax. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. All right. At this point, we will move to the administrative matters that we heard for our consent agenda. And if, Mr. Smith, you could summarize those, please.
Okay. Thank you. First item is a request from the Public Library to apply for scholarships to attend an ARSL conference in Fargo, North Dakota. Second, request from Administration for direction regarding joining the Lake Norman Transportation Commission. Request from the Health Department for review, to review and possibly amend the current mosquito control ordinance. There was no action taken there. I would say that that was just accepted as information at this point. Request from EMS for approval to release capital equipment funds to Troutman Fire and Rescue. A request from EMS for approval to release capital equipment funds to Iredal, I'm sorry, that was Troutman Fire and Rescue. This one is Iredal Rescue Squad for the purchase of rescue equipment. And a request for the approval of the May 9th, 12th, and 17th, 2016 minutes. And just for point of order, Item F. was handled under the public hearings.
Is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chairman Norman. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. And then, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Item Nine, announcement of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. Mr. Smith, would you run through those?
We have two announcements for the Central Line and Workforce Development Board. Joey Chambers and Carl Larson have volunteered to serve again and can be reappointed on June 17th, or 21st.
21st, I'm sorry.
Also, the Region F. Gauging Advisory Committee, there are three announcements.
And the State's Board of-
Oh, I'm sorry. State's Board of Adjustment, ETJ, one announcement.
There's no action to be taken this evening. If there's anybody else that desires to be considered, you can visit the Iredal County website, and you can get an application and submit that. Those matters will be heard for a vote the next meeting of the board on the 21st. Item 10, appointments to boards and commissions. Mr. Smith, if you could run through those.
Yes, there's one appointment for the Mooresville Planning Board, ETJ, and Johnny Robertson has agreed to serve again.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we would reappoint Mr. Johnny Robertson. I can personally testify that he is an outstanding member of that Mooreville Planning Board as our ETJ representative.
Motion by Commissioner Bowles. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Farmland Preservation Advisory Board, there are two appointments. James Dobson and Jerry Turner have both volunteered to serve again.
Okay. Any comments? Is there a motion?
Chairman, I would offer a nomination, Mr. James Dobson and Jerry Turner. They've served well on this board in the past, and I would move that, close the floor to nominations and appoint these two gentlemen by acclamation.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson to appoint by acclamation. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And finally, the Personnel Advisory Board, there is one appointment, and Barbara Davidson has agreed to serve again.
Mr. Chairman, I make that motion to appoint Barbara Davidson Personnel Advisory Board.
Motion by Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 11, unfinished business.
Mr. Chairman, Matthew Todd has prepared a report. I think you've seen it, and I had to ask Matthew if he would spend a few minutes just giving you an update on an issue that has come before you a couple times, and it has to do with subdivision roads and the deterioration of some roads prior to them being taken over by the state.
Does everyone still have a copy, or would you like me to pass them out? To summarize, the issue that seems to come up often, as Mr. Smith mentioned, is the deterioration of subdivision roads. And the way the ordinance works is, a new subdivision comes in, of course, there's a review process that goes into the survey work, the plating, the recording at the register deeds of the plat, or the subdivision. And through that process, a developer can choose two things when it comes to dedicating a road to public use. They can either go ahead and build the road up front, or they can get some type of bond to ensure that the road is finished to the state standards. You know, depending on the developer, they choose different routes, but a lot of times they do put up some type of road maintenance bond to ensure that the road is constructed. And as- And as they start selling off those lots, they start getting some revenue flowing in, they then, you know, complete the roads, and then we release whatever instrument they've used to secure those funds. Very rarely, I mean, we have done it, you know, where a developer falls off, and they don't do it, we have collected those fees and then gone in and hired someone to go in and pave, you know, put the final layer on the road. But what happens a lot of times is, either way that the developer chooses, either doing it up front or doing it later on, the road, as soon as it finishes, it starts deteriorating, either from construction traffic or just the normal residential use of the road. Unfortunately, a lot of home buyers do not know to ask if a road is maintained by the state. And they end up buying a home, it's not maintained by the state, and no one in the neighborhood knows the petition process, or much less that they need to petition the state to take it over. And then if they do, a lot of times by then, the road has fallen below the state standards, and the state will not take it over until the developer or those homeowners bring it back up to the standard, which gets into some substantial money a lot of times in these developments. Per state statute, and it was kind of clarified last year, from the county's perspective, we can only require completion of the roads. We cannot hold them to any type of maintenance from completion till the time the state would take it over. You can see in that report, there are some requirements that a road has to meet as far as the number of homes before the state's going to take it over. It gets into number of homes per linear feet, you know, ownership of the homes, and some different requirements. But that's essentially the problem. And again, because we can't hold a developer responsible for that maintenance, we're kind of tied on coming up with a fix for the problem. I've outlined some things that might go a little ways toward helping the issue. And again, this is kind of a draft format, you know, we're still searching for some other options. But it seems somewhat, it's also an educational-type thing of trying to educate home buyers that, you know, they need to ask those questions, and they also need to jump on the opportunity as soon as they meet the DOT requirements to get the road petitioned. And that's just a quick overview of the document and the issue with the road deterioration.
So bottom line, what is the staff recommendation to try to address this problem in a proactive way? So, you know, on the front end, so that it doesn't become an insolvable problem when the road deteriorates to a condition that no one wants to mess with it, and the homeowners can't afford to?
Well, I think of the recommendations that we made, you know, most of the things that might do anything, I think they're going to be incremental, and it's going to be based on educational, you know, putting a statement on the plat, and there's a reference to what that could look like. We could also add something to our website that shows the roads in the county, so a homeowner could go to our website, and they could figure out if the road is state, if it was meant to be a public road, and then if it's state-maintained or not, and possibly even have the number of houses on the road, so they can start trying to answer those questions that the DOT is going to ask for. The other option that I put in here is that, I mean, staff could try to take a more active role and monitor the number of houses that are being built in each subdivision. That would turn out to be a lot of work to try to do that, but it is something that could be done. Maintaining that type of database would definitely be somewhat burdensome on the staff. And, you know, it pulls, as it said there, it pulls the county more into the road, the whole road maintenance paradigm, I guess, so.
Can we put that monkey on the developer's back? In other words, if you're in the business of developing, you're going to know how many houses you have there, you're going to know how many linear feet of roads you're planning. Once they reach that threshold for NC DOT to be petitioned to take the road, they then be required to give notice to the county, or to actually work with the homeowners to collect the petition, or whatever the process is to submit to the state the request.
I don't know that we could put it on the developer, because every development's different. You know, you might have a developer that sells all the lots off differently to individual homeowners or other developers, home builders. So I don't know of a mechanism where we could tie it to the developer, and then that goes kind of close back to the maintenance requirement. You know, and I will say, I mean, this is a problem across the state. You know, all counties are dealing with trying to get their hands around this. So it's probably something that is evolving.
Well, I think that we can be creative in this. I think that since we authorize subdivisions, that we can require them, when they reach those defined density levels, to take action to initiate, or to aid in the process of petitioning the state DOT. You know, I'm not one for adding another requirement on top of bunches out there for doing business, but we've seen too many examples of homeowners ultimately bearing the cost, which they can't begin to bear, and the roads just deteriorate, and the county isn't going to, can't go in and fix them, because then we'd be fixing every road in the county. So we need to get, you know, developers are generating income and profits from development, and so this ought to be part of the process to protect the buyers in those developments down the road. So I would encourage you working with our council to see what options we may have locally, and if it appears that we perhaps don't have the legislative authority to put in a requirement that seems to be commonsensical and not unduly burdensome, that we raise that with our legislative team to see if they can give counties that authority.
Mr. Todd, our subdivision ordinance doesn't require that road to be complete when the subdivision is completed?
It requires that the road be built to state standards. And that's where, like I said, the developer can choose to either finish it and build it to state standards before the plat's recorded. If they want to push that off, and you know, just do a base layer of asphalt, get it graded and everything, and then finish it later, once they start seeing some revenue come in, they can do that by securing, like I said, some type of bond or financial instrument, so that we have the money to make sure it's completed. But again, it's from that completion date to the point where DOT will take it over. That's where the problem arises. You know, and as the economy has turned around, and you know, developments are filling up faster, you know, your newer developments, this isn't as big a problem, because they get built faster, which means there's a higher chance that the road's going to still be to state standards, and the state can take it over. But it's some of those developments that over time have developed very slowly because of, you know, the housing market. And also, I mean, this can go back long before the subdivision ordinance was even in place. I mean, you've got roads that were dedicated to public use long before the county got into countywide zoning, or, like I said, the subdivision ordinance specifically came into play. So we've looked, and I believe it's about 400 roads total that have the potential to fall into this area here in the county.
So those subdivisions basically have the binder down, but never got the top coat of asphalt on?
No, they got the top coat on, so they completed it.
And then the road deteriorated before the state took it over, and the state says, if we're going to take it, you're going to bring it back up to standard. So we have no way of holding a developer to get that road under the state before it deteriorates?
No. Like I said, it's specific in the statutes that we cannot require any type of maintenance from completion date to DOT taking it over.
I understand, I'm not suggesting that they do that additional maintenance. It's just that once it's complete, it meets DOT standards, and then you have the required density of development, that that triggers a process by which DOT is petitioned to take it over. As opposed to it just being out of sight and out of mind, no one, the developer really doesn't care, the people are unaware, and then you get to the point where it starts to, you know, deteriorate, and you run into the problems. We can't solve the problems that are already there. I'm just saying, we may be able to prevent problems in the future if we have this sort of triggering mechanism to start that process in a timely way. Mr. Pope, do you have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I think that's a good suggestion, and certainly will be glad to work with Matthew on that. I was going to ask a question that I should probably know the answer to, but don't, and that is, do we have the authority to require that the bond remain in effect until the road is accepted for maintenance, rather than just remain in effect till it's completed?
My impression is no, but that is something we could look into with more detail.
It'd be a big lever if we could do that.
We'll look at that. Are there comments?
If you can do that, that solves the problem for the most part.
Yeah, we'll continue to look at it.
Well, push the envelope. I mean, it may not say so in so many words, but, you know, something that isn't specifically granted, authority that isn't specifically granted, isn't necessarily specifically denied. So, anyway. Thank you very much, Mr. Todd. Appreciate your staff's hard work on this issue. Is there, moving on to item 13, is there any new business to come before the commissioners? Hearing none. On to item 14, County Manager's Report.
Thank you. I'm going to hand out, just for your information, Commissioner Robertson and I attended an event on June 2nd. NC Competes for Jobs, it was held out at Mitchell Community College. And this is just some basic, or not basic information, but information that I picked up for you to take a look at at your leisure. Good presentation, and good information that was distributed. The first page is kind of a summary of what you have in the packet. The second item that I have is something pretty brief, but a conversation that I don't think I have followed back up with you on. Talked to Erskine Smith in Mooresville a couple days ago about their annexation policy. Excuse me. And the town has agreed to move to a twice-a-year annexation cycle, so they'll be doing those in December and in June, which was something that the Board of Commissioners was very interested in seeing done. I think twice a year is much better than once as it relates to releases of jurisdictions. So just an update on that. And finally, we have slowly but surely been using the sheriff's resources and chief deputy byers to go through our active shooter training for all of the county departments. I can't say how many we have left, but we've been getting through all of those. They're doing a really good job at assessing our buildings and helping us, you know, as a staff, you know, 1,000-plus, I'd say now, to be prepared in the event that we have a situation like that. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. At this time, we will be going into a closed session for attorney-client discussions pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11 Subsection A 3, as well as personnel subject to General Statute 143-318.11 A 6. So we are recessed to close session.
We'll now resume an open session from the closed session in which attorney-client matters were discussed, as well as personnel actions that required our attention relative to the salaries of the Register of Deeds, the sheriff, and the county manager. The deliberations that we had took into account, the raises that have been projected based on county-wide employees and performance and potential. The consensus appears that the Register of Deeds and the sheriff would get a 5% increase in salary, the county manager a 6% increase with an additional $1,600 for a travel allowance. Is there any further discussion? Is there a motion?
I would make that motion, Mr. Chairman. It reflects the personnel policy we established in early on commitment that we made to the county manager over time. His salary started out a little, well significantly less than average. This is an effort to bring him up to the level of his peers, so I'll make that motion.
As we agreed to when he was hired, yes.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. And we do thank Mr. Smith, and we do thank the Register of Deeds, Matt McCall, and our sheriff, Darren Campbell, for the exemplary job that all are doing in the service of the citizens of this county. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Promoted, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous. We are adjourned. The consensus appears that the Register of Deeds and the sheriff would get a 5% increase in salary, the county manager a 6% increase with an additional $1,600 for a travel allowance. Is there any further discussion? Is there a motion?
I would make that motion, Mr. Chairman. It reflects the personnel policy we established and the early on commitment that we made to the county manager over time. His salary started out a little, well significantly less than average. This is an effort to bring him up to the level of his peers, so I'll make that motion.
As we agreed to when he was hired, yes.
Okay. A motion by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. And we do thank Mr. Smith, and we do thank the Register of Deeds, Matt McCall, and our sheriff, Darren Campbell, for the exemplary job that all are doing in the service of the citizens of this county. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Pro move, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimous. We are adjourned.